...for the meeting's order, if you could now please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Madison, if you would come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you do that, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Fine job. And, uh, Mr. Whitmore, will you lead this part, please?
My good Father, as we curse the life anniversary of September 11th, let us remember the victims from the vicious attacks of terrorism that shook this great nation. Remind us that though, that through our willpower and unwavering love for this nation, that we will continue on with the same determination to pursue liberty and justice for ourselves and for those of our. Let us take this time to reflect and remember those who sacrificed defending our country overseas and its borders so that we may enjoy the freedom to gather here tonight and collectively determine our city's future.
Amen.
Amen.
For the question, please call the roll.
Curran?
Here.
Badad? Matt?
Here.
Levy?
Present.
He Barry?
Here.
Stanley?
Here.
Taylor? Cola? Dagicash? Darcy? Ellis?
Here.
Cabo?
Present.
Shawty?
Present.
Miss Carney?
Present.
Whitmore?
Present.
Nero?
Here.
Turkins?
Present.
Sheeney?
Present.
Patello?
Here.
Scotty Sala?
Here.
And Taishel?
Present.
There being seventeen present for absence, please let the record reflect the following: Matt is uptown in business. Mr. Taylor has been sick, so send their prayers with him. Uh, Mr. Cola is at a family function, and Mr. Darcy had to race to the airport unexpectedly to pick up his bride. Uh, with that, uh, to cover our absences for this evening. There are, uh, first thirty minutes of each council meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council. I ask any member of the public that wishes to address the council, please do so by items that are specifically on the agenda. And you must be a resident and a taxpayer for the city of Danbury to address the council. Any member of the public that wishes to address the council, please proceed. Any member of the public, just sit down.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Charlie Sotero, a property owner in the city of Danbury, assessors map I-16 lot 230. I'd like to respectfully draw the council's attention to the Public Buildings Report and this month's agenda. Specifically, Appendix A. If you return to that, if you could, uh, which is towards the back of the Public Works Department report, um... Appendix A is described by Superintendent Palanzo as a statistical analysis for repairs and maintenance that the Public Works, the Public Buildings Mechanics engaged in during the month. This month were, uh, July 2012 is being reported. If you're looking at that report, uh, you'll see that, basically, it has total hours this month comparison to total hours last month, and then the percentage difference. Uh, with the mayor's, uh, with the chair's permission, I'd like to hand out, uh, to the council a copy of last month's agenda, copy of the same report we're talking about for illustration purposes, if I may.
You can give to the clerk, if necessary, so the stewardess can see.
I'd like to take just a moment while that's, while that's being handed out, uh, to say that, basically, what we're gonna do is, uh, look at, if you can, look at this report, which is last month, uh, for the month of June, and compare it to July's report, uh, for this month. Uh, basically, what should be happening is the figures from June listed as this month should come over into July's report as last month for comparison. If you look at that when you get it, you're gonna see that none of those numbers are right. Uh, I think I'd like to wait just a minute. Without carrying the numbers over properly, the report is totally inaccurate. Much to my dismay, and looking back at these reports, none of them that I can see have been right for six years. Six years! It's hard to believe, but I think if you look at this, you'll see. So, basically, with the, I highlighted the this month's figure in green, and that should, uh, match to July, uh, the, July's report for the last month. So, basically, looking at July's report, just to give an example, the second category down where it says electrical, it says total hours last month, ninety-six. If you look at June's report for this month, the electrical was eighty-three point five hours. Those errors are continued right down the road. Basically, they're all wrong. In addition to carrying none of the, the, uh, numbers correctly forward, the percentages are not correct. And again, I'll say, basically, none of them are correct for the past six years. Looking at, uh, it, uh, July's, this month's, just look at where it says maintenance. It says that they had a two-hundred-and-thirty-nine percent minus, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine percent hour usage in the maintenance department. Think about it. How can you have two-hundred-and-thirty-nine percent less than something? You can only have a hundred percent less, basically. So, I mean, that's glaring. That's every month I see this. Last month, I think, it was a six-hundred-and-sixty-six percent decrease in a particular category. It's mind-boggling. I don't, I don't understand it. Uh, there's also missing categories from month to month. I think if I'm not mistaken, I just noticed it while I was sitting here, the locksmith category is not even, uh, actually, I'll, it's not even in this month, I don't believe. There used to be administrative, administration, uh, administration category. There's none in there now. But, basically, it, no, it kinda shakes me to, to see that we have that kind of, uh, reported. I beg to say that if there's a monthly report that we're using as statistical analysis for, we are, as taxpayers, are probably in some kind of trouble here. Uh, these are huge percentage mistakes, and, as I said, they go back to November of 2006. In the July, uh, 2012 public, uh, agenda, uh, they were discussing, I believe it was May, but yet there was an April attachment for the figures. So, that wasn't even the right month. And the narratives did not even match the figures that particular month. I think it was, uh, May. It's basic high school math. The percent change is a current period is the difference between last period divided by... Last period, that's how you get a percentage. I don't know what formula is in those computers, but it's, it can't be right. In a somewhat related matter with the Buildings Department and as a public matter of safety, I think all city-owned buildings should have street numbers, should be displaying street numbers. It's a matter of, uh, safety, and, and it should be done. Many, many progressive towns have, uh, these ordinances already on the books, but at least if we don't have the ordinance, we should have our numbers on buildings. Even though everybody knows where the new police department is, if somebody comes from out of town, they see a number, which happens to be three-seventy-five, we'll never find it. You know, and many buildings don't have numbers on them. It seems to me that that beautiful police department has got two-feet-high lettering on the top of the building and it's on the wall out front. Should at least have a number on it, and I have discussed this in the past.
Kinda hard to miss that one, it was just too...
I'm sorry.
Kinda hard to miss that one. You might wanna try a different one. Go find a place.
And the only other thing I could say is, uh, under police reports, I'm wondering if any of the statistics show noise, uh, summonses or actions on motor vehicles or typically motor scooters or these pocket bikes that are rather prolific again this summer. Uh, I know down at the South End, you can hear one of these kids on a motor, motorcycle. I don't wanna call it a motorcycle, I guess it's a pocket bike. But I can hear them from probably way out Triangle Street, come all the way across town, without missing a beat, you can hear the noise till they get all the way up Southern Boulevard and Mount Philavon, all around the place. So, I, I just hope that we can kind of address that issue with... Even, I'm not sure what the law is regarding whether or not they should be on the road, but certainly if they're making too much noise, then I think we could do a little bit better with that. Thank you for your time.
Any of the members of the public wish to address the council seat? I think we have some guests with us from the Danbury Police Minutes with us. I know that, uh, beginning of the summer, some folks had questions about the Summer Youth Employment Program. Uh, so when your councils indulge, uh, they've got a very, the, uh, kind of overview of some of the private individuals.
Um, good evening. My name is Julie Schmetter. I'm the Executive Director of Danbury Services. As you know, we've been operating the Summer Youth Employment Program for the city of Danbury, and I thank, um, Mayor Mark Battley for giving us this opportunity. I'd like to introduce Tom Thomason, who is the Project Director for the Summer Youth, for the program. Tom?
Thanks, Lord. Oh, Council, Mayor, I did. This was very exciting, a nice, exciting summer for Danbury's Youth Employment, and I'd like to thank Locksmith Corporation for the coverage of facilitating this program, and I hope to assist, uh, currently, for continued confidence. Funded from the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board and the Connecticut Department of Children and Families allowed us to place fifty-five students at twenty Danbury work sites throughout the city. Drop included councilors in training, office assistants, program aides, and park maintainers. The youth worked about sixty-one hundred hours this summer, attaining ninety-five percent attendance under gross wages of over fifty thousand dollars. This workforce, workforce proved their dedication and commitment by volunteering an additional one thousand hours during the six-week program. I've asked two students to give a brief commentary on their experience this summer. Uh, Jana, would you come up, please?
Just make sure you identify who else you are.
Okay. My name is Gina Madias, and I work at the Hussini Center of Great Lakes.
Jana, where do you live?
Uh, in Battle.
Ha, ha!
We've worked for like the longest time.
What happened? We lost it?
I know!
All right, well, the council's indulgent. Any of the Danbury residents back there? Right, right.
So, I work at the Hussini Center of Great Lakes, and during that time, I can say, I learned a lot. Um, a few things that I've learned was how to work with computers. I had some skills, but I learned through Excel and all that, as well as how to talk to important people in hand-to-hand events. During that time, it not only showed me that there are people out there who can help, but it also showed the community. There was a lot of new people that went to the Hussini Center and got help. From this experience, I learned a lot, and it taught, not only me, but the community a lot.
All right, we'll go back to Danbury, please. Do you want to start this real quick, say, from ways you did this summer?
This is Shabani.
Does she live in Danbury?
Yeah, I guess she lives in Danbury.
Just identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Shabani, and I worked at Great Plains. I worked at Great Plains last summer. This summer of 2011 was the first summer I started to work with the Danbury Services. Being able to participate has made me become more mature and responsible. Last summer, I worked at Great Plains, where I was more in part of the class. Encouraged to stay active in all their activities, from music class to speech games, I enjoyed working as a classmate and helper because the friends and students were ready to give up on a hard work sheet or letting you do classes where I was saying, "Do this." The students knew that they took care of the problem. This summer, I worked at South Street Elementary. As my second summer, I worked with kids. I was overjoyed. I loved working with kids. Although the summer was very different from last summer, I enjoyed it. My job was to be an assistant, an assistant to many camp founders. Being switched from group to group, I got a chance to work with kids ages five to twelve. I spent a lot of the time with the younger kids. When I was te, when I was teaching them how to read, I was proud to see how fast they got. It created a feeling knowing you taught them a new word or you helped them go from a basic book to a chapter book. This summer camp had a lot of outdoor games to always keep active. Soccer games were in upper elementary. We also played a lot of different tag, tag games. I enjoyed, I enjoyed it in all the games, encouraged them to play some games. A bonus to work this summer were the field trips. My favorite was basketball, college baseball. Learning about the history of basketball was interesting. The change of basket, uh, over the years, shocked the kids. From bonding with the students, I decided to volunteer the rest of the week. By August seventeenth, the last day of volunteering, I had eighty-nine hours. Analysis says growing has changed me. For once, I'm more patient, I could be more helpful around the house and in the community. My parents even told me they saw a change in me around the house. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, Danbury City.
Good job, and I appreciate you coming in today, the council. When we started the program early on, they, in the years past, we, I'm not gonna say it wasn't totally optimal, but it was, it could've been better, and I think you guys have elevated to the next level. I think I speak on behalf of the council that we're very proud of the work that was done. I know Jack was asking, he goes somewhere, and he didn't, I didn't. Uh, the bridge, uh, that was built as well, uh, was a twelve, uh, what, or somebody's, a student shared there as well, right?
Yeah, it's ten.
Ten. It's, uh, a whole bridge there and one of our trail systems. So, uh, all good stuff and definitely productive, so great job. We really appreciate it. Any other members of the public wish to address the council seat? Just a second.
Thank you, Ron. Bloom Cavers at 110, he's down going again. I'm here this evening, actually, to give the legislative leader the items, the Housing, Health, and Social Service Department, uh, in the region. But, uh, to give her the petitions that we gathered for somewhere, the two weeks of the homelessness campaign. I don't know if you'll see all. We do have one hundred and seventy signatures, and, uh, and I'd love council members to be able to review it and see the kind of support there is for completing all of those ambitious goals in the annual plan. I did want to comment recently on the update that you all received in July on the mayor's task force on homelessness. I know Mr. Levy in particular wanted some facts about the progress. Today, I have to tell you that there are not one hundred and sixty homeless beds, as we know, big stinks. I wish that there were. We have some great programs to help people on our, so we people with addictions, people with mental illness, um, there are some great programs to help women and children who are homeless. But those programs aren't helping the shelters, and they aren't permanent housing. There are not a hundred and sixty beds, there are only forty-nine. And there are a hundred and fifty-eight homeless individuals according to the city's home and twelve counts. So, there's a hundred and nineteen right now who have homelessness. And anyone who has used shelter for thirty days at the shelter also has homelessness. We really do need that next level of housing, that continuum, the permanent supportive housing for individuals who've been homeless for six months, three years. That theory is called housing first. You put people in housing, then you have programs that support for them that leads to employment, that leads to income, and that leads to independence. Most times, a job can cure homelessness. You're applying, applying to a doctor called for two-hundred-and-seventy-five units. Let's get it done. And, uh, please don't hold out homeownership as a cure for homelessness, as the update does. We actually took two of our homeless couples around to, um, the Renaissance at High Ridge, and the, um, cheapest unit for sale there now is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that is, uh, absolutely out of reach on homeless couples. They also wouldn't qualify for steps in place or, or had to have for commandment for that matter. The second thing, I would love for the Health Department to be able to come up with some more sanitary facilities for the homeless to use in the city center. The city shelter closes at one o'clock, it doesn't open again until nine. If you can kind of get that picture in your head. And I'd like to see the Health Department perhaps starting negotiations with the Mountain Street line, to be open during those hours so that people could have the use of sanitary facilities, or perhaps consider, um, using City Hall. And even the volunteers at Dorothy Day, we met last night, who are willing to offer additional access for showers and bathroom facilities during their time here. The last point I wanted to make has to do with the very limited hours for showering at the day center and the actual operations for showers themselves. Showers are only available from eight-thirty to nine-thirty, one hour. And they're prison showers, they have one temperature, that temperature is hot, and you have to push and hold a button with one hand in order to operate the shower. This is extremely difficult, um, for people with disabilities and for the homeless and the people that took the podcast soon. So, thank you for the indulgence. I'm with you.
You have the petition.
Here are your partitions.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak to the council seat? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to our regular scheduled meeting. Uh, just a couple, well, I have a, there's a long list of events this summer that are very, very busy, but we're, we're planning. Just, we're, uh, clear, uh, September eighth is Mike and Laura Allison's wedding anniversary. Congratulations, Allison. September twenty-fifth is Peter Nero's birthday. What is this? Okay, good. Uh, and then, uh, a whole bunch of events that you'll see on there. I just wanna highlight a couple. Taste of Danbury is on the eighth and the ninth, um, which is usually a pretty good event at City Center. We also have a, uh, Beaverbrook Firehouse is having their flambe on that Sunday. And then you'll see through here a whole host of events that are going on. There's way too numerous to be able to display tonight, uh, but they certainly are, a lot of them are. September eleventh ceremony, I still, um, remember, ceremony still be held at six P.M. Uh, at, uh, Renaissance at Elmwood Park, where the memorial is, as we have traditionally done. Uh, this year, as, as always, will be a solemn remembrance of those who lost their lives in that particular horrendous event. Uh, we also, I just want to mention, uh, this has been a little bit of hard work for our Public Works Department, but we've pretty much got it done now. I wanna thank Leo Nell and the Building Department and a bunch of other people. The Traveling Vietnam Memorial Wall, uh, uh, will be here. It is a two-thirds, um, replica of the Vietnam wall that they literally will mount in grass over at, um, the memorial. It's, it's incredibly big, and if you don't realize how, how long it is, um, it's really hard to have it here in Danbury. These folks, uh, are reading from your home, have been working on this for over, almost a year now, uh, planning for this particular event. So, if you could make an effort, both people watching on TV, as well as the council and members here on this, to stop by and pay respects, it's a very powerful symbol of those who gave all under our, for our nation. Uh, the Old Timeers Dinner is at the end of the month, it's always a big event. Household Hazardous Waste Day is also another big event, September the twenty-ninth, at the Public Works Facility located at Fifty-three Newtown Road. And that's something that generally draws a pretty good crowd. I know there's an item on the agenda over later related to household hazardous waste. Uh, what we'd like to do is get a grant and find a, a permanent location for that because we end up tying up the Public Works Facility. But if you wanna go over and see how that all works, then your big hands, if you have anything else, we'd appreciate it. Uh, over the last couple meetings, some of the council had mentioned, uh, well, it wasn't really a damn much of a debate, but questions, I guess, more appropriate about the chairs. You notice the sit, the, uh, department heads don't sit in the front row. The reason for that is if you go and feel the chairs, the springs are now popping through all of it. You might felt that in our public hearing, and kind of figured that out. Less is gonna go about, uh, cutting it out, but a lot of the folks have moved to the back. So, we wanna get those department heads back up front so they can't hide. Uh, and that's one of the reasons why they gotta replace those chairs. I mean, it just can't be re-pulsered, they can't be saved, of course, to their, uh, their own shape. And obviously, we're gonna have to request a handicap, uh, basis as well for the old children, those like that. So, I think, uh, we've also begun some work on the sound system. Yes? Yes. You've done a lot of work on the sound system. Still not there yet, we're in there. And, uh, that pretty much concludes the analysis I have for this evening. For that, uh, Mr. Majority Leader, all accepting consent count. Locks due, the minutes, please.
Your Honor, I make a motion and we waive the reading of the minutes. All members have copies, the copies are on file in the Legislative Decision Office.
Saying nothing. It's a date signed by Mr. Perkins. Are any deletious corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Saying nothing, I'll try your minds on acceptance. All is in favor of accepting the minutes, please signify the saying. Aye? Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Give the analyst's. Now, Mr. Majority Leader, we'll take the consent count.
Thank you, Your Honor. Second calendar, September fifth, 2012, reaches follow. Number three, receive communication and reappropriate two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and five cents into the general fund accounts based on previously appropriated encumbered and/or unspent monies for fiscal year 2011, 2012. Number eleven, receive the communication and adopt the resolution allowing Mayor Markie Baum or his designated forested pond airport administrator to apply for and accept funding from the FAA and the State of Connecticut towards the cost of redevelopment of hatched weekends and rotating weekends. Funds totaling nineteen thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars shall be transferred from the contingency account to cover the city share of the seven-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollar project. Number twelve, receive the communication and adopt the resolution renew the personal services agreement between the City of Danbury and State of Connecticut Department of Public Health to maintain now a mass adaptive response trailer to be used in critical events or incidents. Number fourteen, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Markie Baum to apply for and accept funding through the State of Connecticut, uh, Rosa Program for Elevator Modernization at the Old Library Building totaling ninety-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Number fifteen, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Markie Baum to execute and bring between the City of Danbury and State of Connecticut for the construction, inspection, and maintenance of the Backus Avenue traffic signal, state project number thirty-four dash three-twenty-five, and federal aid projects number CN one oh three four, uh, and parentheses, one-one-two. Number sixteen, receive the communication and adopt the resolu, resolution authorizing Mayor Markie Baum or his designated David Day Superintendent of Public Utilities to apply for the State of Connecticut Department of Health, uh, Grant Loan Program regarding Hawthorne Ferris Water System Upgrade Emergency Generator Funding. That serves the consent counter for September fifth, 2012.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Majority Leader. What is your pleasure, council? Mr. Matt?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Made second by Mrs. Stanley. Any discussion about this consent calendar? Saying nothing, I'll try your minds, all is in favor, please signify the saying. Aye? Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Give the evidence. Uh, clerk Adam White, please.
Communication, motion to the fire department. Their council members, it has been great pride, pride and honor that I hereby submit for your confirmation the promotional appointment... for your confirmation the promotional appointment of Lieutenant Joseph Alice to the position of Fire Captain. Lieutenant Alice started his career with the Danbury Fire Department on October fourth of ninety-nine. He came to the department with a bachelor's degree from Western Connecticut State University and with firefighting and EMS experience from Greenwich and Stratford, Connecticut. Lieutenant Alice is an accomplished and dedicated officer and was promoted to the rank of Fire Lieutenant on November seventh, ninth of two oh seven. In addition, he possesses several certifications, which just to name a few, are Fire Service Instructor, Fire Officer One, Incident Safety Officer, AEMT, and EPA Asthmat Technician. He has also received many awards in combination throughout his career with the Danbury Fire Department, including Unit Citations and Award of Merit. Additionally, Lieutenant Alice has achieved the rank of Number One on the Fire Captain's eligibility list. Lieutenant Alice's high standard of determination and dedication have been a tremendous asset to the city, the department, and the community served. I am proud and honored to submit his confirmation for promotion to the position of Fire Captain. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment. Sincerely, Mark D. Fountain, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, council? Mr. Alice?
Thank you, Your Honor.
No relation, by the way.
I would like to make a motion to receive the communication to confirm the promotional appointment of Lieutenant Joseph Alice to the position of Fire Captain.
Motion made second by Mrs. Stanley. Any discussion about Mr. Alice?
Yes.
Mr. Curran.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd just like to say to Joey, I couldn't help but think all day about how proud you've been to be able to keep up the good work.
Then Chief.
I'd just like to say, honored to know Joe, and proud to say we're related, he's a great asset to the Fire Department, City of Danbury, and the community. Not quite sure his father would give him down to someone with a tremendous pride. So, congratulations, Joe.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, the appointment of Joe Alice to the position of Captain of the Danbury Fire Department. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, the other side. Joe, congratulations.
Speech.
Joey, it's my pleasure to congratulate the city, and thank you for your service. For those who don't know, Joe's wife Rachel also is a proud Danbury public servant working for the Danbury Police Department, she does a great job. Joey, you've done a tremendous job in the Fire Department. For those who don't know, also, he was my student to high school, look at a great job I did. Look at what you've done. But he's excelled at each level of leadership that he's been promoted to. He excelled on the test, he has done a tremendous job while he's in the field, also dealing with our residents, which we know is our number one function. All of those things have really proven to be a competent, proven professional. And so, Joe, I want to thank you for your commitment to the residents of our city, and I know they appreciate you, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, out of two.
Communication, purchase of land in Lockwood Lane.
What's your pleasure, council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, I would refer this to the Ad hoc Director of Finance, Director of Planning and Administration Council, and the report process, planning and text system.
It's your latest. Uh, 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 Ad Hoc Assistant Fallow, we'll send it to the same ad hoc, because there already got another partial land that's Mr. Taylor, the chair, Mr. Hatad, and so we can look at all of those out there. Out of three, does I consent? Madam Clerk, out of four, please.
Communication, DXR Holdings LLC, Wallingford, Wood. Dear Mayor, Brownlow, members of the council, I have attached a letter from Attorney Robin Conde, who represents DXR Holdings, seeking to release, for if necessary, the broadening of the restriction that was imposed by Towne Danbury on December twenty-ninth, nineteen forty-eight. To date, I've been working with the Legislative Office and trying to find the minutes of that town of Danbury, meaning that imposed those restrictions, but we have not located them as of this letter. I am looking forward, I am forwarding these documents for consideration. Sincerely, Paul Estefan, Airport Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, council? Snap?
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to refer this to Corporation Council, the Aviation Commission, the airport, excuse me, the Airport Administrator, and Planning for Reports.
Uh, no objection, that is so ordered. Madam Clerk, out of five, please.
Communication, donation to Still River Greenway to Pedoquian Research. Dear Mayor, Brownlow, members of the council, the City of Danbury has recently received a donation from Pedoquian Research, an amount of two thousand five hundred dollars for the Still River Greenway. This donation is a result of the efforts of our consultant, Jack Aljowski, in recruiting Still River Greenway stewards for the long-term promotion and maintenance of the greenway. Each steward has been recruited to adopt a section of the greenway or to adopt a function that will sustain the greenway over time. Pedoquian Research, along with its supporter of this greenway, is donating this funding to adopt a new native garden zone at the, at the entry to the greenway. It will be named the Pedoquian Native Garden. I respectfully request that the council accept this donation, respectfully yours, Scott Roy, Director of Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, council? Mrs. Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication, accept the generous donation from Pedoquian Research, an amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to adopt the native garden zone at the entry to the greenway. It will be named, named the Pedoquian Native Garden. Please sign and vote again.
Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, the other side. Madam Clerk, out of six, please.
Communication, anonymous donation to Still River Greenway. Dear Mayor, Brownlow, members of the council, the City of Danbury has recently received a donation of the amount of five hundred dollars a month for the next five years, worth a total of thirty thousand dollars for the Still River Greenway. The donator, the donor is a local businessman who has requested to stay anonymous. This donation is a result of the efforts of our consultant, Jack Aljowski, in recruiting Still River Greenway stewards for the long-term promotion and maintenance of the greenway. Each steward has been recruited to adopt a section of the greenway or adopt a function that will sustain the greenway over time. This anonymous donation will support a five-year inspection and maintenance process aimed at keeping the greenway vibrant for the Danbury and the greater Danbury community. I respectfully request that the City Council accept this donation, respectfully yours, Scott Roy, Director of Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, council? Mr. Whitmore.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept the donation, and the amount of five hundred dollars a month for the next five years, totaling thirty thousand dollars for the Still River Greenway.
Second? Motion made second by Mr. Rattler. Discussion on this particular item? Mr. Sidey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Such large anonymous donations are not the norm before this council, and while this generous individual wishes to remain anonymous, just to note for the record that members of the council, city staff, have done due diligence, reviewed the public records to ensure that there's no apparent business pending by this individual before the city, and no potential conflicts of interest with accepting this donation. And the fact is that this individual wishes to remain anonymous, I think underscores the generosity and the altruism of the donation, particularly one over time.
Mr. Sidey, any discussion about this donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, the other side. Madam Clerk, out of seven, please.
Communication, donation to Park and Recreation, which is from United Way and Bowing Road. Dear Mayor, Brownlow, council members, the Park and Rec Department has received a request from United Way to install a born learning trail as a part of the Rogers Park playground. The trail is an interactive and playful tool designed to help support early learning and positive impact in school readiness levels of young children. Danbury currently has a learning trail at Mill Ridge School, and similar trails can be found supporting camps. The value of this donation will be approximately four thousand dollars. Bowing Road Online will supply all materials that provide installation. I request that this generous donation be accepted at the next meeting of the council. If you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me, and similarly Nicholas Kaplanis, Director of Recreation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, council? Mr. Nickerer.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and accept this generous donation for the born learning trail. I'd send it forward, please.
Motion made second by Mrs. Stanley. Any discussion about the learning trail? Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to know how, how long this trail is, and exactly where it is, the relationship to the playground down in Rogers Park. Uh, anybody who can be handy.
Mr. Langley's knows?
Come on up, Brian. It was actually a pretty light agenda, so I actually researched this one. It's really about thirty feet long. It's like, if you looked at the one at Mill Ridge, it's about from here to that wall, maybe a little farther. And it has a bunch of signs, and they kind of tell kids it's a ha or a jum in big letters, their parents can read to them. And your, one was how long, what's your other question? Wait, wait, if you're looking at Kids Park in Rogers Park, you know, like, you back, you see the ivy branch behind you? Parks here, there's this little grassy area with an asphalt path, it's right there, on the asphalt path, a little hopscotch there, things like that, twenty feet long. That's it.
It's a fine job, pretty. Well, Mr. Perkins, here, but. Okay. Okay. That's what's happened. All right. Sorry to interrupt you. Anyway, so, any other discussion about this? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, the other side. Madam Clerk, out of eight.
Communication, maintenance easement from the United Savings Bank. Dear Mayor, Brownlow, members of the council, pursuant to our special exception approval dated May fourth, two eleven, the United Savings Bank is required to provide a fifty square foot maintenance easement to the City of Danbury. We are working with Corporation Council's office on finalizing the documents. Kindly place this on the September City Council agenda and approve this in your usual manner, including copying the map and easement. Thank you for your attention to this matter, I remain Ted Becker from the Premier of Matters.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, council? Mrs. Tysholz.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to refer this to Corporation for Reports, Corporation Council.
Seeing no objection, that is so ordered. Madam Clerk, out of nine, please.
Communication, uh, requisition for sewer extension from three Scuffle Road.
What's your pleasure, council? Uh, Mr. Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to refer this to City Engineering and to Planning for Reports.
Seeing no objection, that is so ordered. Madam Ted, please.
Communication, request for water extension, which is a fire hydrant on Morgan Avenue for Ingersoll, corner of Danbury.
What's your pleasure, council? Mr. Curran again.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to refer this again to City Engineering and Planning for Reports.
Items eleven and twelve, we're on consent. Madam Clerk, out of thirteen, please.
Uh, resolution, HEFCO grant applications. Dear Mayor, Brownlow, and City Council members, the City of Danbury has been contacted by HEFCO to participate in grant applications to the State of Connecticut Office of Policy Management Dash Recreational Performance Incentive Program. The grants are for various shared and/or regional services for HEFCO member municipalities. This particular grant program requires municipalities to endorse the regional applications. As such, HEFCO requests endorsement from the City Council. Please contact me if you have any questions, thanks, and thus regards, Bruce Stewart.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good bad job of that name.
Director of Economic Health.
Good job. What's your pleasure, council? Mr. Seaver.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing Danbury to participate in the Housatowna Valley Council of Public Services to provide grants from the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management for regional shared services. Ask question five.
Second? Motion made second by Mrs. Tysholz. Discussion on this particular item? Mr. Rattler.
Thanks, Your Honor, I'll to the chair to record tomorrow. It looks like this particular grant is for two specific items. One is the mayor, who was earlier, collection of household hazardous wastes, and another item of the emergency sheltering needs of medically vulnerable populations. Is that about the size of it?
Yeah, it is. It's a process thing, where we have to approve the application.
Now, the grant would be coming from HBCO or from the state, or?
HBCO applies from that.
Okay, so it goes through them, and it would come from what, ultimately, the state, the federal government?
It is a federal program. The purpose of this is that because it's a regional, all municipalities have to request together to authorize HEFCO to apply.
Okay. Let's say that it'll be a little optimistic, here we get the grant, and we now ultimately wind up, I guess, with a permanent repository for our hazardous waste, or not a repository, but some sort of a transfer system where we drop it off and ultimately get rid of it. Will this exist for the residents of Danbury exclusively, or will we be importing hazardous waste from some of these other communities inside the HBCO umbrella?
And I'm not able to comment specifically on that. The, the purpose of the grant is typically to do a regional sharing, so if it were in Danbury, excuse me, there it would be probably a sharing.
That's current practice now, though. So maybe our, ours later in the month, somebody from Newtown could come to our, anybody in the ten-town HR region could come to our house and ask, and we can go to Newtown and get the top option. But the grant doesn't necessarily mean that hazardous waste, household hazardous waste per se could be Danbury, it could be anywhere in that region.
So by voting for this particular grant, we're not asking for these facilities to be located in Danbury, we're simply going to explore putting it someplace within this multi municipality region, is that about the size of it?
Yeah, I mean, potentially, you know, the household has waste site, we don't really have the site right now, so could it be Danbury? Yeah, you know, if you look at the likelihood of us being a little bit more industrial than some of the surrounding areas, I think the likelihood is a little higher, but in general, it could end up in Newtown, it could be in another, you know, depending on what's best deal and what's mine again.
Well, you know, I bring this up because I would actually like to see something like that in there, but I would like to see a service for the residents of Danbury, an important thing to have, instead of having to go to Newtown or some other place with Milford, it would be greater for citizens to have, we have this kind of facility. But looking ahead, as we become more regionalized, I think one thing we need to keep our eye on is that the city does not become a repository for everything in the multi municipality region, that we, we need to have serious conversations with our neighbors, that they need to pick up some of this effort also, as, as well as Danbury, and that's my major concern. But as far as this particular grant, tonight that we're talking about, this does not indicate where any of this stuff is going to be cited, we'll be exploring that later.
Yeah, there's no specificity in the grant application, it's just that we all have to approve them to be able to take them.
Likely it will come to Danbury, but it's not specified at this point.
There's no issue in your view of it.
All right, thank you.
Now, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. For you, I'm not exactly sure who to direct the next question to. Just based on the general conversation that just occurred, we're, we're basically pooling our resources with some of the other local municipalities to determine where these services may be placed. For one, where the household hazardous waste may be placed, and also where the sheltering of mentally vulnerable populations may be placed. So currently, we, um, these are not set to be in Danbury.
No, we're not pooling our resources, we're applying for more resources than we already have. So we have to be candid that we currently offer a level of service, this will hopefully provide enough money to offer us a higher level of service with more money from the state and/or federal government, depending on who the grant is. So for example, the household hazardous waste day is one example. We do one in Danbury, right? This year will be in September in Danbury. Next year, we could be in Newtown. The following year, we could be in Mill, so we rotate that around, so that every Newtown has it. Now, you know, the, the sheltering of the emergency thing, we use Billy Williams Gym and Westcon during storms. There were people from Bethlehem there, there were people from, anybody that got released from the hospital but couldn't go home, and they needed a bed to stay, but they couldn't stay in the hospital, we use that facility. That, that was the last shelter to empty out during that storm period we had last October, a year ago. So, um, I think you have to look at us as being able to access more resources, but not impacting any of the not impacting any of the stuff we already do. Uh, so we wouldn't lose, you know, would we lose, you know, like, our shelter or something like that? No. We would, we would be able to offer a greater level of service with, with more money.
Thanks. Just follow up, just for clarification. I, um, I mean, you know, when I read this, we had a discussion amongst ourselves, it, it almost seems like this is the beginnings of a plan for expanding services, um, for, for specific types of populations in the Danbury area. Is, is that something correct?
The state is, uh, moving towards, um, a regional approach to a lot of the services we offer. Uh, this is a tentative step. We've already done a lot of that with our, our homelessness management information system, the HMI system, a couple of years ago. Um, you know, one of, that's one of the challenges, is we, we hear a lot about homelessness. We want our, uh, our budding neighbors to do their fair share in this issue, not just Danbury. Uh, but the state is putting a lot of incentives out there to try to get everybody to work together. We're working on the regional dispatch, you know, we haven't completely given up on that idea. We've got a, a preliminary step we're hoping to execute soon, uh, and then later on, uh, we'll, we'll move to a regionalized dispatch. It's another area that the state is incentivizing with cash grants to be able to do yet. This is the, this is the direction that the state wants everybody to go, not to have one hundred and sixty-nine silos. They want everybody working together when it makes sense and when it's a forward motion.
Thanks. I'm, I'm just concerned about having this, uh, the new hub. That's, you know, some concerns with some of our other members, but I'm just concerned about being in Danbury, uh, the new hub. Thanks.
Any other, Mr. Seaver?
Thank you, Your Honor. To yourself, ready, three, to Corporation Council. Procedure question regarding, um, HEFCO and the voting with a determination, I don't want to say voting, but a determination between the ten towns. If we are fully, not fully resource, but we're applying for a grant collectively to regional planning, which makes sense to save money and not duplicate, uh, efforts, can one town say, no, I don't want a particular thing in my town this year? For example, if we didn't want to do hazardous waste, or we didn't want to do something in Blackwood. Or can the ten towns outvote, one town say, look, this year, we're doing it in your town? I assume we have, each town has a veto power and has to be sort of with a unanimous agreement. That's my only concern, is the procedure on, it's something being imposed out of town. Some regional bodies and other collection, or they can, would like it, or others can do.
There's, uh, tremendous non-negotiation with, with citing these kinds of facilities. Generally speaking, no town can have something forced out of it if they don't want it. Um, and over the years, there's been some pretty heated discussions about where people said, I'm, I'm going to leave HEFCO if that's the case. Um, and generally, we try to work out, you know, collegially, and try to come to some consensus about what the best path is. Uh, you know, years, many years ago, they were supposed to actually do two transfer stations, one in Danbury and one in Milford. Milford decided to never build their transfer station, uh, which, to us, that's why we get the Milford Garage in Danbury. Um, but in general, nobody is forced to, to take that project. There's a lot of discussion. And for some of this stuff, depending on what it is, it may make sense to be in Newtown and be in Milford, uh, just because the prices are right. A lot of these grants are just plain, they're just strategic playing, no hard money for, you know, it's all soft block. There's no hard money for the facility, but it's, but it's a start. It's a start to get us, to start working together.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make sure procedurally we have protections. At the same point, I think with council members, regional planning makes a lot of sense, but at the same time, we want to make sure they're also protecting the interests of our citizens and not taking something that other towns just don't want, as opposed to collectively doing something positive for the region. The other, the other thing I would add, there, said, answered the question completely, but the, this particular, uh, request, if you approve it, really is only a small element of other HBCO and municipality-related regulations that exist right now, so this doesn't alter protections and other requirements that are already in place or continue to be present.
I understand, and, and the reason I ask beyond these two is, I think somebody intimated it, at least in one of the whereas, the recitations, it does say, at the present time, although not exclusive, applications will be processed for and in age to grant. So, I'm assuming that this authorization may go, if I read this correctly, beyond just these two particular grants. And as such, that's the reason I'm asking about the process, the procedure, and the protections that the city may have, in addition to the benefits we get from this type of regional approach.
Yeah, again, uh, that particular resolution authorizes the first step, which is making an application. The application has to be reviewed, has to be made, that's all you're approving right now. Uh, if something was backed in substantive terms of placement, in terms of program, you'll see it. This is, this is the authorization to make application, because apparently the Connecticut Office of Policy Management said, was an HBCO, you want these grants, you have to get concurrence from all the municipalities. And that's the first step, that's all.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Levy.
Uh, Your Honor, if I may, I, I, haven't we been doing this for a long time?
Yeah.
It's a real benefit to the residents of Danbury, and if we in some respect have to be a, a little bit one-sided in having the collection done here more, more often than the other eleven communities, uh, being the largest community in the Houston Valley elected officials, it makes sense. So, this is really, uh, an asset to, to have this convenience and this benefit located. I, I heard a little bit of reluctance coming about this whole thing, and I see it as, it's a positive thing, it's not for commercial collection, it's only for residents. Is that correct?
That's correct, and, you know, other projects that aren't listed in the resolution, we still have to get the requisite into local agreements, uh, it still has to be vetted by the council if there's some big project that's out there. A lot of this money is strictly strategic planning. Uh, you know, we're ready for twenty-five thousand dollars to parent the state, they'll figure out where the best area is to cite this, you know, face time, where all the, all the waste is coming from, all that kind of stuff. Um, but it doesn't necessarily, in any way, assert the authority of the city council or any, any really legislative body throughout the region. All this stuff has to go back to the state of Danbury. So, um, you're absolutely right, some of this stuff can be a rollback. No question about that.
Uh, Mr. Wisconsin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this is my own knowledge, maybe for the record, uh, if someone could explain to me the wording here, it says, for emergency sheltering needs of medically vulnerable populations. What does that entail?
Typically, those are people that, um, there's really two classifications of people. And we, we actually, we're really good at this because we had a, uh, we had this happen during Storm Alfred. When the hospital releases somebody, uh, oftentimes, they're, they're still fragile, they're still vulnerable. And if, if, if the electricity was on and everything was fine, they could recruit, finish the recuperation at home. And the hospital's goal is to try to get you out of the building as fast as possible to the home site, to be able to recuperate. During a storm, there's no power, there's no services, there's no water, there's no heat, uh, those folks don't do well at home, and we have to provide alternate shelter for them. In this case, we use the, the gym in Westcon. The other, uh, um, we do have people that have shut-ins throughout the city, and that was one of the very tragedies that we saw during the last storm, where we had people who were elderly, people maybe who needed oxygen, might need intensive services, dialysis, things like that. That would be another use of that kind of shelter, where you just couldn't send them home without power, without heating, without, uh, the resources it needs.
Thank you.
Mr. Burton.
Thank you. Just to, to clarify this, so, so medically vulnerable is different from, uh, various types of disability?
That, yeah, I mean, look, I mean, in that situation, or something like Storm Alfred, we were scrambling for all people, you know? And there were folks that, that had mental, you know, uh, whether they're elderly and they had dementia, or Alzheimer's, uh, that was a challenge for us. We were able to manage that. Um, and also, uh, you know, folks that, uh, might have, uh, various kinds of psychosis, that can be a challenge as well. They generally, though, would not be housed at this kind of facility, only because there's so much medical equipment around, uh, and there's so much, uh, in many cases, sensitive equipment around, you just, you gotta watch those folks a lot. Um, we did, there was a challenge for us, but we get it done, particularly folks that are elderly with dementia and stuff like that, very sad, uh, and, and, and it was very helpful to have the senior senator and a bunch of other folks to make sure those folks were careful.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on the grant. All is in favor, please signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by the saying nay. Aye, sound, motion carries. Again, I was fourteen through sixteen, we're on the set. Number clerk out of seventeen.
Ed Haggman Court Downtown Incentive Package.
What's your pleasure, Council? Chicago.
Thank you, Your Honor. Recent developments brought to our attention by appropriation council's office with regards to according to seventeen-seven. In order to do this length and do it one time, I'm going to make a motion that we recommit amendment seventeen, it's entirely to look at seventeen-seven for some language. How's it?
And I think you, you got, uh, I met with legal staff earlier last week, I think we got consensus on what has to be done here in this data. Any reflection, we want this package to go through, uh, we've got a little bit of language for the sidewalk section, so, uh, we're going to send it out that way one time, bring that up. Without objection, I'll recommit this, uh, the motion's made by Joe, this is seconded by anybody?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Sadi. All's in favor, we recommit, I'll signify by the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries amnesty. Reminder, the committee was Mr. Darcy in the chair, Mr. Calvo, and Mr. Duro. So, you guys go with this.
I'd meet, please.
Ed Haggman Court, please. Ed Haggman Court, Newtown Road, propose land swap.
What's your pleasure, Council?
And I'll make a motion at this time to waive the reading of the report. Number eight, item number eighteen, all members have copies and copies are filed in the legislative assistant's office.
Mr. Seaver, second. Let's try to see any objection to this, uh, waived the reading of the report. Seeing none, then we'll waive the reading of the report. Uh, Mrs. Tysholz, what's your other question?
Thank you, Your Honor. Would you refer this to a public hearing?
Most of the, to a public hearing. Seeing no objection, is so ordered. Uh, Mr. President, primary report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We made a motion to waive the reading of the primary reports, as all members have copies and copies are filed, review in the legislative assistant's office.
Second. Most of the, seconded by Mr. Leggersett. Uh, discussion or, uh, primary report, Mr. Seaver, kind.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I may, to Chief Baker. One quick question, let me ask you. Chief, uh, I've had some inquiries, emails, whatever, and also noticed myself, a lot of, uh, these new motorbikes going around town, scooters, whatever you want to call them, all kinds of small vehicles, uh, causing traffic problems all over the city and a lot of noise. Have you, have any statistics on what's going on with this type of thing, or?
No, I don't. Uh, we're in the process of, uh, just starting to install a new computer systems, hopefully we have that for the future, but right now, we don't have it available.
I guess, one other question that I, I believe a while back, we looked into the same type of problem, where some of these were actually illegal, they didn't, they're supposed to register or insure or whatever. Would they be part of your program?
Uh, not part of tracking statistic, but I would be glad to take a look at it through our traffic unit. We have a sergeant, four officers assigned to traffic. Problem is that the laws are a little complicated in that, uh, engine size, wheel size, uh, determines whether it's legal, whether it's a license, whether you need a motorcycle endorsement. It's almost in the flowchart to enforce that type of law. But, but, but we'd be glad to take a look at it, not a problem.
So, we will be, uh, in the near future, looking at the situation, trying to create it out?
Right, that's first of all, but yeah, we're positive.
Thank you.
I think it may just interject, Mr. Wisconsin, one of the problems the chief has is that you could have two scooters right next to each other, one is forty-nine CC, it's lower than forty-nine CCs, it's legal, there's nothing you can do about it. And then, one next to it is fifty-one CCs, that's not legal, requires a whole different set of registrations and everything else. It's, it's very, uh... It's difficult when you're going call to call, uh, and other issues as well. Sorry.
Uh, to you, to the chief. Mr. Wisconsin is right, you know, five or six years ago, there was a bipartisan group of members of this council that passed a resolution and then worked with our state legislative delegation. Two of us went to Hartford and testified before a committee to get the law changed, so that we could clamp down on this, this, uh, plethora, on these little mini bikes you can call them, that were raging all over the place. If there is, from a statistical nonsense, I know you're not setting up necessarily for the analysis, but if, at least anecdotally, council members or legislative delegation could know the types of vehicles you're seeing, for which you don't have enforcement authority, statutorily or ordinance as, as authorized by statute, then we can try to change state statute, which we did about a half dozen years ago to address that problem. So, if the tools don't exist now, the best place to change them is at the legislative level, because we can only hope up against what they allow us to do. And, you know, just reach out offline, uh, to you or to members of your staff to see if there's something that we can push forward at the state level.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes?
If I could jump in here. Chief, would you just, uh, tell me briefly, these motorized vehicles, regardless of whether they need to be licensed or insured, do they need to obey, uh, local traffic ordinances when they're on the street?
Yes, they do.
Okay, they stop at red lights, they have to stop, uh, right on red, they've got to stop at stop signs, and...
Yes, they do, but I mean, from a practical standpoint, uh, police officers are in a car, it's very difficult to chase a little motor scooter like that, uh, and my state center, police officers continually required to assess whether it's, uh, creating a bigger danger by chasing the, the, the danger the cycle itself's creating. So, it's, it's, from a practical standpoint, difficult to enforce.
I, yeah, I understand, money and balance are tough, but they do at least have to obey the traffic laws.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Levy?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Last month, I had mentioned that the, the training officer, this was unrelated to fire at the police department.
Oh, good.
So, I guess, in fact, chief, I do notice that, uh, and I did notice this over the weekend, that burglaries are down significantly, and crime overall in the city was down.
So, any arrests? Good job.
Uh, last month, I, I mentioned the number of, of volunteers that did not pass the, the test for firefighter one, and in this month's report, I noticed that, uh, there's been a great improvement. Five of those students, uh, were retested and passed as well, so that the pass/fail rate went up considerably. And I spoke to the chief during the month, and he explained some of the difficulties involved, and I did want to point that out, that, because that raises the level of pass/fail considerably. Also, I noticed that the training officer, um, Marco Maso, was selected to receive the International Association of Chief, Fire Chief Safety and Health and Safe Section Safety Officer of the Year Award. The award was presented to Marco and his wife, Val, in attendance at the annual Fire Rescue International Conference in Denver, Colorado, on August third, and I think he should be congratulated, and, and thanking to the chief for having, having those kind of people within the organization.
Thanks, uh, appreciate it. Mrs. Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was wondering, I would like to take a moment to comment on her remarks made by the resident about his report.
Thank you, Councilman, I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, it's very simple, so I'm going to get out and look at a statistical report and pull it apart, pick it, and, you know, dice it, slice it. These reports are gleaned from a monthly report that comes off of our computer, that was installed, our computer program is installed in nineteen eighty-nine, which, uh, compiles our workbooks. They are taken and then manually worked up into the report that you see. And it's done by my staff, and they have been trying to do their best effort to let you know where the hours that the maintenance mechanics, uh, have worked during the past month. They try to break the hours down by whether it's in a major work category, electrical, maintenance is a work category, not the department name, um, carpentry, et cetera. And so, and then they also try to break it down further by whether it was performed in a public building or a school, so that you members of the council have an idea where we spent our time and efforts that month. Um, the fact that there's no locksmith hours is because the locksmith position was eliminated about five years ago, now a re-injury term, so that's why there's no more locksmiths. The administrative section was eliminated... The administrative section was eliminated because that doesn't change, that's me and my clerical staff, so that doesn't change from month to month, and that's meaningless statistic, and that's why that was eliminated. The strangeness and the changes in the percentages are because one month, you can put 500 hours in snow pond, and the next month, we have zero hours. Somehow, they try to represent the fact that that's a major swing. I'll work with the report and try to make it a little bit easier to understand, and the other option, or the other thing I'd like to address is the numbering of the public buildings. Mr. Saterell did ask me if I would consider numbering the public buildings, and I thought about it, but a majority of our public buildings are set so far from the road that it would be impossible to see the letters, the numbers, excuse me. Well, the city has opted to do, long before I came, was use very large letters and name the building. You know when you go down near the avenue, this is Danbury City Hall, it says it on the building. The library says Danbury Public Library, right on the corner of Main and West Street. This, I feel, is more effective. Every school building has a sign out in front of the school building telling you what school it is. With the cost of putting in numbers on the buildings, I'd rather use the city's money in a better way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stanley, any other discussion on the primary reports? Just want to reiterate again, Chief, thanks for the, for the good job on the burglies, so some of the, concerns about, glad to see the friend continue the job, nice work, Mr. Wisconsin. I have one more question. Mr. Wisconsin.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, thank you, Mr. Glanzel, for your explanation on the hours situation that was going on earlier. Council side and I have been listening, working to here, and looking at the hours and the so-called differences, opinions as far as the hours, but there's only about two or three, three out of nine that are really possibly questionable. The other six or seven that are on this list that we received tonight are very close without any big margin of error, and present a problem of understanding why or why not. And Mr. Glanzel's explanation, I feel, as far as like locksmith and so on, sort of took care of that situation, so all in all, I think we're not too far out of respect where we actually get these reports from, and we will definitely be taking a look at it down the road, maybe a little bit more stronger to the reports, I feel justified that type of problem right now. Thank you.
Mr. Wisconsin. Just a couple quick other announcements I just want to mention. Bill Teicholz's send-off was last week, was he delayed or is he on his way now?
He's in the country, well, he's in the city.
But he's, he's preparing. He'll be traveling to Afghanistan?
Eventually.
Eventually to defend our great nation, so we wish him the best of that speed, and we're so proud of him, and, you know, I called him last week, and I'm probably, I just need to relay it after the city and the council, we appreciate it. Then finally, a tragedy struck the city of Danbury family this past month. Larry McGalston, many of you know, did a lot of work with the unit, was our light inspector, did a wonderful job in the building department, from firefighter, passed on. Larry was beloved by all of us, his son, Marcus, who works for us in the fire department, is lieutenant, and he certainly will be missed, and I know that the council, his by-office, and all the department heads certainly thank Larry and his family for his contributions to our great city and just a wonderful, wonderful man to be with, so I just want to mention that, especially in the whole system, make our family. But then, I'll extend all committees, and I want to entertain the motion to adjourn. And then, Mr. Seaver, the second, and then, Mr. Nagersch, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Stanley, here.
We're asking you to please refrain from using your handheld electronic device while operating your motor vehicle. This has caused citizens property damage, personal injury, and loss of life. So please, when you're operating your motor vehicle, keep your hands on the wheel, your eyes on the road, not on your phone. Thank you.